To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is roll call.
Mr. Rakuchi.
Here.
Mr. Nader.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Moss.
Here.
Mr. Gray.
Here.
Mr. Severson.
Here.
Okay, next item is report from the planning director, EJ, you're up.
Good morning Chairman, members of the commission, EJ Evaldi with the Planning Services Division. Happy New Year. We, it's gonna be, it looks like it's gonna be a lively year. We have a lot of projects that are gonna be coming forward, all the way from down in the southern part of the county, down in Granite Bay. We have several subdivisions down there that are gonna be making their way to the commission this year. Then, of course, traveling all the way up to Tahoe and the Village at Squaw Valley specific plan, which, you know, that draft EIR is out. And then also Marjorie Valley West. So, it should be a busy year. And being that it's El Nino, it will make for some interesting Tahoe trips later in the...
You're gonna, you're gonna plan the trip appropriately so it won't snowed in?
I'm gonna continue my perfect record for last, from last year. So, before we get started, most importantly, I want to introduce Mr. Fred Arcuri. He was appointed by the Board of Supervisors at their January 5th Board Meeting. So, welcome aboard. Fred is replacing, of course, Ken Denial, who has served the commission, I think, at least fifteen years of his public service that we had. My, my understanding is that he is retiring. Rumor is, it's to the other side of the state line. So, anyway, best wishes, best wishes to Ken. And once again, Fred, welcome. We're glad to have you aboard.
And we'll have his oath of office after your report.
Yeah, as soon as I get, that'd be perfect. So, just for kids, some calendaring items, upcoming planning commission hearings. The next hearing will be January 28th. Most of you received a copy of the draft EIR for the park at Granite Bay. We'll be accepting comments from the public on that document at that meeting. And then, for anybody here in the audience, that draft EIR is available for public review online. We're also gonna be having a February 16th meeting, which is the first meeting in February. When we get to the next meeting, I'll have a better idea of what items are gonna be on there. But I know, at least for the first...
February 11th.
February what?
11th.
Thank you.
February when?
11th. I don't know what's happening on the 16th. So, February 11th, but I, I imagine, you know, we're probably gonna continue with the two meetings a month, at least, you know, for the next few months. At the Board of Supervisors on January 5th, that Ricky Reese Williamson Act cancellation contract, which you made a recommendation on, that was approved by the board. And so, they're gonna continue going through that process. That also included the minor land division. The board also approved a medical marijuana placeholder ordinance, and that is to give staff time to develop a comprehensive regulatory framework to effectively regulate medical marijuana. So, with that, that's all I have for right now. We're gonna be making an appointment to the wastewater advisory committee in a little bit. I'll give you a little information on that when we get to that point. But I think, most importantly, to get Mr. Arcuri official. I would have Kathy do the oath of office right now.
EJ, last year, didn't we have a calendar of meetings? Because toward the end of the year, they kind of vary with Thanksgiving there and with Christmas and stuff. Are you gonna bring a calendar of meetings?
We, you know, I, we do have a calendar. I didn't make any changes to the calendar this year, so it's the...
It'll be the second, second?
Second and fourth, second and fourth Thursday of every month.
Except...
But what I can do, I'll, I'll put that on the agenda for next time and just so it's official.
Yeah, the only two months, I think, is in November and December. That might vary from that. Sometimes, we only have one meeting. And of course, we have special meetings sometimes, too.
Right. I think one of the dates this year lands on, like, Thanksgiving, right?
Yeah, right.
So, we'd have to make adjustments for that. So, I'll go ahead and put that on the next agenda, just to memorialize all that.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for EJ? Okay, thank you, okay. And the oath of office for Fred Arcuri, and I guess Kathy, you'll be handling that?
Sure.
Okay.
If you could stand with me and repeat after me. I put it before you as well, if you'd like. I...
I, Fred Arcuri.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend...
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States...
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservations...
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge...
And that I will well and faithfully discharge...
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The one with clap. Would you like to say something at this time, Mr. Arcuri?
Um, no, I, I'm, hopefully, I'll provide some value, you know? I'll do the best I can.
We have a big seat to fill there in Mr. Denial's.
I do.
He's been a long time, and I really appreciated being on, on with him the last five years, especially when he was chair here. His patience and perseverance during some troubling public hearings was, was to be admired, that's for sure. I hope I can do as well.
He was a good man, he was a good man.
Thank you for being on board. And then, a roll call will be amended to recognize Mr. Arcuri's presence here, okay? Now, planning commission selection of officers, and I'm not quite sure how we did this in the past. Did we make nominations for all of them at one time and be done with it, or?
Probably do one, one at a time.
Okay.
And you have a, you have a guide in front of you from 2015. So, I would make, you know, make your, have someone make a motion to each of those and vote on them individually.
The chair will entertain motion for selection of the 2016 chair.
I make a motion that we nominate Richard Rakuchi to be the 2016 chair.
I'll second that.
Moving second, are there any other nominations?
Which one is he?
I knew I wasn't gonna get by without your comment, Larry, after I give you static every now and then. Do you turn off your cellphone, by the way? Okay, it's been a motion to the second. Do we need roll call or roll calling? No, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous. Selection of the 2016 vice chairman nomination.
Okay, I make the motion that we nominate Wayne Nader to be the 2016 vice chair.
I'll second that.
Moving in second, are there any other nominations? If not, nominations are closed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Selection of the secretary for the next year. Our nomination now open.
Mr. Chairman, I would nominate Richard Johnson.
I'll second that.
They moved in second, Mr. Richard Johnson be appointed our secretary or select our secretary. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you very much. Now, we're on to the wastewater advisory committee appointment.
This is a difficult one.
What?
It's where everybody looks at each other and see who doesn't wanna go, huh?
If I, if I, I'll give you some, I'll give you some time to...
EJ promised us some new information, EJ.
I'll, I'll give you some time to think about it, as I give you just a kind of a briefing of what the committee actually does. But what they do, they make recommendations to the environmental health director regarding ordinance adoptions and revisions. They review methods, techniques, and materials for onsite sewage treatment and disposal. They deal with policy issues and also appeals. There's thirteen seats on that committee, and it's a cross-section of people from the industry, the county, and then there's one member of the planning commission, which Ken Denial served that seat while he was on the commission. So, that's why we're asking for an appointment.
How often do they meet?
So, so the committee hasn't met for a couple of years. And the reason being is, up until that point, they had been working on a draft sewage disposal ordinance and manual to comply with Assembly Bill 885. They actually completed that. This year, our environmental health department will be making application and submitting that ordinance and manual to the state. The state has approximately, I think, a year to review that information. So, when the state comes back, there may be a need for this committee to meet again. So, I don't see anything in the near future where they would actually have to, you know, attend, attend a meeting because they wouldn't exist, right? But, what's that? Later this year, right? Prior to going to the state?
Yeah, they're gonna go to the board first.
So, I guess what we can say is this committee, which has been pretty, you know, dormant for, for the last couple of years, is it will, will be slowly...
Picking up a little bit, okay.
I, I'll just throw this out for the commission members. I have an interest in this because I have background with the Lincoln wastewater facility and also the transmission line that's being constructed right now. So, it's a topic I'm interested in unless somebody else is more passionate about it.
I think you, I think you...
I just have knowledge on it and I'm willing to serve.
I think you took the... I was gonna say, you took us off the hook.
Yeah, I nominate Wayne Nader.
Well, you had the second. I think we have nomination by, by Larry, and you seconded it.
Oh, I said...
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. Boy, you helped us out there. Thank you very much. Now, the item on the next part of the agenda is the public comment, public and comment on anything they wish to here within our jurisdiction, of course, that's not on the agenda later on here. And is there any public comment? If not, we'll go on to, it says consent agenda, but I noticed at the end, there is no consent agenda item, so we'll dispense with that real quick. Now, the timed items, zoning text amendment related to temporary outdoor events, wineries and application content requirements. And Mr. Roscoe, I think, is gonna be handling this for us? Okay, you guys are still discussing last minute changes? Sorry, I should've given you more time. I saw you over there, George. Thank you for being here.
Gentlemen, it's nice to be before you again today. As you remember, we're discussing the winery ordinance update, just to refresh your memory. Nothing's happening.
Getting off to a good start. There you go.
There we go. We're talking about PowerPoint glitches.
Okay.
So, anyways, just to, just to remind you of what we're working on. It's a proposed zoning text amendment, and it's actually three different sections of the zoning ordinance, 1756-300, which is temporary uses and events. As you recall, our ordinance today allows two events per year for a total of three days. We are proposing that that be amended to allow for a total of six days worth of events in any increment that someone chooses to apply for. Then, the actual winery ordinance, 1756-330, which is the actual winery ordinance, which we are in the process of, we will take that ordinance out and replace it with the ordinance that gets approved ultimately by the Board of Supervisors. Then, there's just a little bit of cleanup, 1756-0305. It actually talks about the required contents for winery applications. That section will be scratched because it will be, it will be covered in the new winery ordinance.
So, George?
A question already?
Jump right into some questions here?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
This is a discussion item today, so...
Okay. Temporary uses and events, is this agriculturally oriented?
Um, no, temporary uses and events, it applies to, to everything across the board. If you don't have a use permit for, let's say, you wanna have, let's say, a concert even, something, you could apply for a temporary outdoor event. We have large, we have large events, like one's called Wanderlust. It's a yoga event in Squaw Valley. Those could be used for temporary events. It only came to light during this process because a lot of the agricultural producers and the vintners said, you know, we don't really need to have much more than six events.
Yeah.
And we think that if we could change the temporary outdoor event section to allow for six days' worth of events, that that would really help us towards our goal.
Okay. And I guess it's in the chart, but do they require a permit of some kind?
It does require the temporary outdoor use permit. It's, it's something you submit to us. We route it to the appropriate county agencies and outside agencies, California Highway Patrol, Fire Services, Caltrans, get comments, and make sure that we can address any issues that might arise as part of the temporary outdoor event.
And it's particular, they, they have to apply each, each event that they have?
They do. There is, there is discussion. If you were having, if you knew that you were gonna have an event in June, August, November, that if you could adequately describe those, we could do one temporary outdoor event for those three different events. We would just specify conditions for each event.
Okay.
And George, you said that it's three now, three days now?
It's, it's two events...
Two events.
For a total of three days each, if you so choose.
So, that would be six days?
Six days.
And so, we wanna get that up to, what, twelve days?
No, six days.
That will be the absolute max, then, that they can do of those type of events?
For temporary outdoor events, it would be six days of advance. So, the number of days that the event could take place has not changed. It's just how that timeframe is segmented. So, instead of having two events, you might be able to have six one-day events.
Okay. And the other question I had was, does that allow somebody to have those consecutively? So, you could have a full six-day event, a whole week, one day after the other, so that somebody would be there for an entire week?
I, I guess you could apply for that. The likelihood that we would actually approve a seven-day event in most issues and most...
Is that your call or ours?
No, that's ours.
Okay.
Not yours. That we would do that is, is not likely. You know, they're, they're intended to be temper, temporary events. And you take a key, the reason it was three days is because that was intended to account for, like, festivals, like something that would start on Friday.
Saturday and Sunday.
Saturday and Sunday. So, anything much beyond three days is gonna be highly suspect and probably not something that we would support or approve. That did not give you comfort, I can tell.
Well, I mean, anytime that the, that a ruling on, on something is done over the counter, as opposed to, you know, them being able to make a special application for it, I just, six days is a long time for somebody in somebody else's yard, so to speak.
Right. And, and, you know, it's not really any different, if you think about it now. It wouldn't be any different than if you applied for two events for six days back to back. It doesn't happen. In twenty-six years, I've never had anyone come in for TOE over three days. And even three days is very rare. That's usually something that's, that's pretty large in size, like Wanderlust and that sort of thing.
George, is there an appeal process for your decision?
For temporary outdoor events?
Yeah, well, for the timing and the length and so forth?
Yeah, I would, I would defer to county council on that. I, I'm not totally sure if we've ever taken an appeal, and I'm not sure if there is an appeal process. It's not something that we inform people of. Are you aware of an appeal process?
Only for the applicant.
What was that?
What was that? Only for the applicant.
Okay.
Well, that's what I meant. Yeah, the applicant, yes, the applicant has the right to appeal our decision, but it's not something that goes to a public hearing where the general public would have the ability to appeal.
I see, okay.
But the public wouldn't even know the event was gonna go on because there isn't a notice out to the public, right? You don't put it...
There's not. It wa, it was intended to be, it was always intended, and we haven't really had a lot of issues with these. It was intended for things, farm and barn tours, those sorts of things. It was intended for just simply one-day events or like a concert maybe somewhere. It was intended to be of a short duration, and, and it really does not pose that much of a problem.
But also could really benefit, you know, seasonal agriculture, pumpkin patches during manure season, if somebody wants to have an event.
And that's, and that's really where it came up, is that it was, there's a lot of the agricultural producers who would like to have two-day events, but one, like, in the spring and one in the fall. There's, it's just simply two events did not quite seem to be enough. So, it was part of the discussion that came up, and, and we decided, and the act commission actually made a recommendation that they thought that this was beneficial, that it just be six total days. An event is defined as anything between one and twelve hours. If you go beyond twelve hours, you get into a second event.
Okay, George, I guess you can continue. Is any other question just on this one item, or?
Just as a point of information, George, you were kind of referencing that part of the reason for the change or upgrade for days is that it would allow the winery section to be a little less exclusive or something like that, is that right?
Yeah, and, and I think where you came up with the twelve, twelve event thing is, the ordinance as proposed allows six events without administrative review permit or any kind of, just by ordinance. And then, on top of those six events, there would be the potential for the temporary outdoor event permits. And then, there would also be beyond that, if you came in for a discretionary permit, depending on where you're at in the zone district, that you could ask for more events with a discretionary permit. So, I think that's where the number twelve came from.
I'm sorry, George, could you define the difference between those two events, the ones where you would actually be applying for them? You know, what, say, the six other ones that you just...
I mean, the six that would be allowed as a matter of right in the, in the ordinance? The six, the six events that would be allowed as a matter of right, the thing, you're just allowed six events at a winery. But what governs it is you have to have adequate parking, essentially, which means for every two-point-five guests, you have to have a standard county parking space. In most wineries that we've gone to as a, as a county and looked at, they don't allow for very large events. Most of them, there's a few that would allow larger events, but most of them could not have much beyond forty, fifty, maybe sixty people. By the time you have the vineyard, by the time you have a tasting room, by the time you have the house, by the time you have to go find that parking, it's very difficult. And, and most of the wineries, except for a few, tend to be enrolling terrain. So, the way the act commission recommended that we limit the size of those six events was based on onsite parking. In other words, for the amount of people that you want to come to your winery for an event, for one of those six events, you have to provide a standard parking space, just like nine by eighteen. And with twenty-five backup aisles, it's probably not paved. I would think we would use six inches of aggregate base for an all-weather service.
But they don't have, on those six, they don't have to inform the county of those?
They do not. If, if the ordinance as proposed was, were to go forward, it would just be something that you would be able to do.
So, how do you monitor that to say, well, they've had, already had their six, or, you know, maybe they could fudge it to ten without the county even knowing about it?
There, it's like every other ordinance. We would be complaint-driven, and if someone was exceeding their events, we would go out with our code enforcement and have a discussion. We now have a third code enforcement officer. And they are available on the weekends as well.
So, the, the neighbors need to kind of log when they're having these events, so they know when they pass over that?
And it becomes very apparent, the, the wineries that would be exceeding those, that, I'm gonna tell you that I believe, after having dealt with the vintage for a long time, most of them will not exceed the regulations. Most of them do not exceed the regulations as they're even written today. And the ones that do, you're very aware of. And if they continue to do that, the county could become proactive in, in making sure that they stay within their, their, their guidelines.
Thank you.
Wow. I'm not gonna have much to say by the time we're done with our discussion. Anything else before I move on?
Well, I think I have some more event questions, but you probably wanna get back to the process.
Yeah, no, no, no. I'm happy. Would you like me to continue forward? I'll go quickly and you can...
Well, you're gonna get, you're gonna discuss the whole ordinance, aren't you? And then, I'll have some, I have a couple more event questions, but...
Yes.
Go ahead, George. Why don't you go ahead and...
Yeah, go ahead.
See how many of them can answer ahead of time.
Yeah, maybe you'll answer them.
As I was saying, these are the three zoning text amendments. I gotta put my glasses on. As you will remember, as, by way of background, we've had five workshops. I have personally been to the MACS, I believe, at least three times at this point. I've lost count. But the last workshop specifically was requested by the vintners. They presented basically requests that they had that they did not think were being addressed in the current proposed ordinance. And the major theme was, they wanted more events. They asked for seventy-five or less person unlimited events. They asked for twelve events of a hundred or less. And with regard to noise requirements, they asked that they just be subject to the county noise ordinance, not additional restrictions that were contained in the ordinance that was being proposed. One other thing was that they thought that the access standards were a little bit over onerous. So, after the discussion and public comment, the planning commission, you directed staff, me, to leave the ordinance as it was written originally, go to the MACS, again, with the understanding that the vintners would be there and they would present these views. And that, when I was done with that, that I was to come back to you and have a discussion about those recommendations. So, what I have up here is, I've actually put the actual recommendations for all the MACS. They're in your staff report. I'm not, I'm not gonna go over each one individually. What I can tell you is that almost every MAC thought that the ordinance needed to be liberalized somewhat, especially with regard to events. That as proposed, it was too restrictive. For instance, I'll just pick out some of the, some of the ones. North Auburn MAC, the vintners showed up with the approval, with the recommendations that they came to you with at the fifth workshop, and the North Auburn MAC said, you know what, we agree with you. We think the planning commission should adopt your recommendations and incorporate them into the, into the ordinance. Then, as you move down, some of the other ones, for instance, the Granite Bay MAC was a little bit more liberal. They said, you know, we agree with most of the ordinance, but we do think there needs to be a slight lessening with regard to the event. There needs to be a little bit liberalization of maybe the number of people at the events and maybe the number of events. And it goes on and on like that. But ultimately, the one that I think, and I'm just gonna go through these quickly, the one that I think embodied mostly what came out of this entire discussion were the recommendations made by the Agricultural Commission. The Agricultural Commission was the first up out of the gate. They're, if you don't know, if you're not familiar with them, they're the body that makes recommendations about all things agricultural to the Board of Supervisors. And essentially, what they said to staff is, these are the things that we think need to be in the ordinance. When a majority of the county's wineries participate in an industry-wide event, it should not be considered an event. In the definition of event contained in the winery ordinance, the term drop-in public tasting at the winery should be changed to normal patronage of the tasting room. Basically cleanup language. The winery should state that non-advertised events that are not open to the general public should not be considered events for the purpose of this chapter. Event size should be determined by available onsite parking. Allow six events without the necessitive administrative review permit. Change the number of people who trigger an event. We talked about tasting room events. It was in the ordinance that you sent me to the MACS with was twenty. They thought it should be fifty. Require that all wineries have at least two acres of grapes instead of the currently required one. So, that recommendation, essentially, in my opinion, is staff embodies what most of the MACS were getting at. So, what staff did is, we wrote an ordinance that incorporated essentially the Agricultural Commission's recommendations. We prepared a negative declaration and circulated it. But specifically what we changed, and I gave you the ordinance from Workshop Five. It's there. It's not attached. It's a separate, separate one. The event definition, we changed essentially from twenty to fifty people. The access standards, this was a big one that came up a lot. The access standards that's in the ordinance from the fifth workshop said that you need two-thirds of the property owners to sign off for a winery to be located on private road. Essentially, what the act commission made a recommendation about was that if there's an HOA that controls the road, that the winery should only have to get permission from that controlling entity. And if that controlling entity didn't exist, then instead of two-thirds, it should just be a majority of the people on the road to access the winery. Noise regulations. They thought that the restrictive noise regulations, which are the same regulations from the community center, should be changed just that winery should be in compliance with Plash County noise ordinance. should be changed just that winery should be in compliance with Plaish County noise ordinance. Tasting facilities, this was basically cleanup language that everyone agreed, including you at the time, to make the tasting facilities consistent with state law, which allows tasting, which allows consumption by the bottle, by the glass, onsite at tasting rooms. And then there was various sections in the winery ordinance that basically said that if this is a section and it says this, that if you get a discretionary permit beyond this, that it can't be less restrictive than the section contained in the ordinance. Staff looked at that, and if you're going to go through a discretionary permit process, it seems like that everything should be looked at and conditions should be placed in accordance with what's appropriate. And in some cases, that might be some provisions that are less restrictive than in our ordinance. And if you leave that section in, you or the hearing body that hears that discretionary action would not have the ability to do that. For instance, you might allow some more time into the evening if it was in western Plaish County and it was not surrounded by anyone and it was not creating any impact. You might want to allow them to go to eleven-thirty or twelve, when our ordinance says it should be shut off at ten. So things of that nature. So those were the big sections that I changed. The ordinance as proposed is attached to your staff report. The ordinance that was from the fifth workshop is a separate ordinance that was given to you. So, we wrote the ordinance based on this. This is the one attached, as I said. We circulated it with a negative declaration to the public for thirty days. We got comments. Is everyone with me so far? God's starting to look a little, starting to look a little hazy.
No, we've, no.
Yeah, yeah.
I put on my glasses, so.
So... So what happened is, is we got comments, and specifically we got a comment from the Public Interest Coalition, Coalition from an attorney, and we got some comments from the members of the public stating that they were concerned about certain adequacy issues in our negative declaration. So in an effort to address these, see if there's anything we could do to address this, to move this process forward, we met with the representative from the Public Interest Coalition and we met with another member of the public at the same time and had a discussion with them about, okay, really, what are your issues? Is there anything that we can do to, to help this along? Is there anything we can do to give you a sense of, of comfort, well-being with regard to this proposal? And what came up was that they were afraid that the language was not enforceable. They were very worried about wineries being allowed to have commercial kitchens, which is not really called a commercial kitchen. It's called a food facility, which has been changed in the ordinance. Environmental Health calls them food facilities. There's about eighteen different levels. But when they say commercial kitchen, they mean the full-blown kitchen that what a caterer or a restaurant would use. They thought that the hours of operation should require that events at wineries stop at seven-thirty PM or be moved inside. Concerned that the noise ordinance, the county noise ordinance, was not adequate to protect surrounding property owners from noise intrusions. So, it was a very productive meeting. Heard their, their issues, discussed a lot of them. We put a lot of the issues to rest. But those are the ones that they were still concerned about. So, we decided that we would also meet with the Ventners to discuss with them, since they had a huge stake in this as well. This was in August. We met with the first group, comment period ended August tenth. We met with them on the eighteenth. When we contacted the Ventners to meet with them, became apparent, oops, Ventners are in the middle of, of wine processing. They're in the middle of the crush, they're in the middle of the harvest. And they were unable to meet with us at that time. They said, no, we want to meet with you, we want to have a discussion, but we have to wait till the crush and the harvest and all those things are, are done. So, staff said, fine, you know, it's an ordinance that's mostly for the benefit of you. We're happy to wait. So we met with them on November tenth. That was the first date that we could all get together. We discussed the concerns that were addressed by the Public Interest Coalition and the public and, and comments that were submitted as part of the negative declaration. And the Ventners' over, overwhelming response was, you know, we've compromised a long ways from where we thought it actually should be with regard to events and time limits and noise limits and that sort of thing. And that they were quite comfortable with the ordinance as proposed and thought that the ordinance as proposed was about as restrictive as it could be and still allow the, the winery industry to prosper. So they thought it was, if it went any more restrictive, it really didn't become a viable ordinance. So with that, staff was okay. And at that point, we would have come back to you sooner. But as you know, November tenth, you're into the holidays. This is a highly controversial item. Don't want to hear that, you know, around Thanksgiving, Christmas, or New Year's. Want to wait, because, you know, people go places, people can't make it. So, we opted to come back after the first of the year. And this is where we're at now. What we're actually here to talk to you about is that based on those comments, there is some issues with the adequacy of the negative declaration. Staff believes that to adequately address all the impacts associated with this ordinance change, that we do need to do an environmental impact report and that we will begin that process soon after this hearing. Unless something comes out of this hearing that, that I am not expecting.
George, there was a, another, if I'm reading this right, another I consider significant change in this. And you sort of touched on it. It was the, where they were required after seven-thirty
Yes.
to either stop or move it inside. It looks like the Ag Commission recommended just using the noise control ordinance
Yes.
as the way to manage that, and that they would not be required to move it inside after seven-thirty. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Did you want me to expound on that at all?
Yeah, but, but they still cannot go beyond ten o'clock, I believe.
The ordinance actually requires at ten o'clock that you, that the noise level at receiving property lines go down to forty-five decibels.
Okay.
Which is very quiet. And, and here's the confusion that comes in, and this is with the, with the noise issues. The county's noise ordinance, as written, is quite restrictive. Sixty decibels is, is essentially the sound of, of a conversation. And that's essentially what you can do at someone's receiving property line during an event. And then at night, after ten, it goes down to forty-five, which is, it's almost impossible to meet without going inside. It would like you have to be outside, far away from the property line whispering. The problem that happens is that the noise ordinance has not been enforced to its fullest extent in the past. And so people assume that the noise levels that are taking place now are what are acceptable noise levels, and they are not. Like I said, the county's noise ordinance is very restrictive. We do have a third officer. We are in the process of coming up with ways to enforce the noise ordinance adequately, decibel meters at property lines, calibrated decibel meters and that sort of thing. And I think what you would find is that if our noise ordinance is actually enforced to the fullest extent, that it will address all noise issues. That's my opinion anyways.
Conversation doesn't tend to carry very much. It just kind of depends on atmospheric conditions
Yeah, yeah.
or the lay of the land.
Right.
But music is probably the biggest violator of noise, because it tends to carry much further. So, that's where I think you're going to have a lot of issues. If they don't move in at seven-thirty and they still have outdoor amplification of, of, of music, that's probably going to create an issue.
I, I, I would tell you that I, yeah, I would agree that it's going to create an issue. But I also think that when it does create an issue, that they've exceeded our, our noise ordinance and that we need to enforce it. I will tell you that on the majority of the wineries, the majority of the wineries that I have been on are in areas that if you had outside music that was either amplified or not, but loud, let's say, even if it was acoustic, you are probably going to exceed the noise ordinances at adjoining property lines. It's just that it has not been enforced vigorously. So, that's kind of where I fall on the whole issue.
Let me see, let me kind of change. Okay, the, as I read it, if you have an event that has fifty people.
Yes.
If you have an event that has less than fifty people, then that's where the discussion is, you have unlimited capability to have events?
Fifty or fewer. It's actually fifty or fewer or more than fifty.
Okay, there's no limits on that then.
At fifty or fewer, it's called a tasting room activity, and you can, and there is no limits, yes.
Okay. On the, on the fifty or more, then, let me see, if they are, if they're, if they're going to charge, I mean, if they're collecting money or do some other things, then they're limited to, what, six additional events a year?
Even, anything that is defined as an event with more than fifty people falls under the six, with the exception that non-advertised events to, excuse me, non-advertised to the public events do not count as events. And that came out of the Ventners' wish that one of the things that is important to the business model in the wine regime, industry, that I discovered doing this, is that they have wine clubs. Majority of their clientele comes out of wine clubs. And what they do is they have one or two releases to their wine clubs a year. And in some instances, they have four, five, six hundred, seven hundred people in their wine clubs. And what they do is they invite those people to come to the winery. Not all at once generally, because no wineries can really accommodate that amount of people. But they might have sixty people, and then another sixty, and then another sixty over some timeframe. They come, see the winery, have a discussion with the Ventner, pick up their case of wine or whatever they're supposed to get, and then they leave. That is not construed as an event.
But this is not a weekly deal or something?
No, it should be, it would be very, very seasonal. I don't think you would have a lot of that going on.
Are there any restrictions that would, I mean, if, somebody, you know, like there's there's a winery down in Amador County that has kind of an event like this every week. Is there, is there something that would limit them?
You, you mean if you had your wine club there every week? There's not, anything that would limit you except the parking onsite?
Parking.
Yeah, so in other words, and I know that sounds not like an adequate solution, but when you take a step back, no offsite parking. That means none on the roadway, none in the right-of-way, nowhere. When you have people on your winery, you have to provide appropriate amounts of onsite parking. That becomes difficult. And I'm not just talking about, you know, we're all going to go park anywhere we can all over the winery and the rows. No, no, no. We're talking about a designated parking area with an all-weather service that has a slot for every car that's there. I will tell you, most of the tasting rooms in this county don't have anywhere near the capacity of fifty people. Most of them that I've seen are ten, eleven, or fewer. So, I know there's a concern about that this is going to become essentially what, what we just discussed, agricultural event centers. But I think when you take a step back and you look at what's happening, what winery's intent, the intent of a winery is, to produce wine and sell wine, that I, I don't think it will be as, as much of an issue as people think, only because of that self-limiting factor of parking.
Okay, unless you have a, a much larger winery that comes in, that would, would they need to get a conditioners permit, which would control that?
Yeah, and, and to be honest with you, based on what I know about the wineries that we have in the county, and, yeah, I actually have a map if you're interested. Guys aren't supposed to see those, sorry. Unless you talk about, this is actually the wineries as they sit today. In my opinion, there might be two wineries in this county that could accommodate, based on these conditions, a hundred to two hundred people. Only two. And they would have to do some significant improvements with regard to parking. Other than that, I'm not, I don't think there's actually wineries that can accommodate, based on these regulations, a large amount of people. I, right off the top of my head, I can only think of two that have the potential for that.
What is our, what is our current experience with regards to code violation today?
And accommodate them, but how many are trying to, and we're having problems with?
There's about three wineries that we have had complaints on in the past with regard to events. Three? About three. Three out of twenty. And based on what I know about those wineries, the ordinance as proposed would take care of those issues.
George, do you have a list of items that are, well, we've, we have the ordinance is for community events, like community event centers. Do you have a list that shows the difference between the winery ordinance and the general community and normal event centers? And if you don't, could you get one? Could you make one for us so that we can see?
I, I could. I mean, I've done things like I've compared, you know, we did a side-by-side comparison of what was an agricultural event center and a winery.
Right. Now, for side-by-side for ordinance differences only between general events and winery events.
Oh, for just between what an event, like any kind of event, and what a non-advertised winery event would be?
Correct. So we could see what the differences would be.
I could do that. I don't have that, but I could do that.
I, I, if, if you could, that would be great. That would help me.
Right. Yes.
Okay, maybe, I'm probably going to have two or three questions here, but we'll kind of spread them out. Let me see, there's boutique wineries, which are twenty-five hundred or cases or less.
Yes.
And then there's the next level up, which is zero to twenty thousand cases.
Yes.
How do you distinguish between the two?
What do you mean? I mean, what's the difference between a small winery and a boutique winery?
Yeah, the boutique winery is twenty-five hundred cases or less, and the small winery goes from zero on up.
I'll tell you, yeah, it's confusing. I'll tell you what the difference is. We didn't have boutique wineries before, and when county staff visited, we had a county, what we call the task force that went out and visited wineries. We saw that there was a need for another subset within the small winery. So the boutique winery falls within a small winery, but it's a subset. And what it allows someone to do is if they want to have a small winery, they can have a small tasting facility. The thought was that these probably, in most cases, wouldn't even be enclosed. They would be like an arbor or an open area where you could have a, have a bar, an outdoor bar, where people could come and, and do wine tasting. The main difference is, is that boutique wineries aren't allowed to have events other than the possibility of TOEs, which are what's allowed for everybody in the county. Anyone who wants to have a TOE can have a TOE, but they don't have the benefit of the six events.
TOE is a temporary.
Temporary outdoor event, yes.
And on, on the, when, when they have the, the days where they open up the whole winery as a, as a group, they could participate on that day too?
Oh, that would be, yeah, those, those actually, like the grape days of summer and that sort of thing, those actually come, we actually issued temporary outdoor event permits for those.
Okay.
So, but this ordinance also specifies that if the majority of the wine industry participates in grape days of summer with a farm and ag tour, that does not count as one of their six events. It is a TOE, separate TOE.
Okay. Okay, that explains that. Let me see. You know, somewhere in the staff report, the word bars comes up again. And personally, I can distinguish between a wine tasting room and a bar, as I understand a bar. But is there a, is there a county or an official definition of what a bar is?
No, not in this ordinance. The, the reference that you were referring to as far as it comes up, there is concern that if we allow winery tasting rooms to only meet the standards required by the state, excuse me, that the state allows winery tasting rooms to serve wine for onsite consumption by the bottle, by the glass. Public testimony has been taken that says, that sounds like a bar to me. People can sit there all day and drink wine, and they equated that with a bar. Don't, don't think that that will necessarily be an issue. It doesn't, from what I can tell from the Ventners and that sort of thing, people don't linger at tasting rooms all that long. They come, they taste, they buy or they don't buy, and they leave. It doesn't appear to me to be It doesn't appear to me to be one of those things where people linger like a pub, or anything of that nature.
That would be my view. I guess, what I was wondering is, is, you know, like most of the wineries go to, they only serve their own label?
Yes.
You know, you go to a bar, and, you know, you're making a choice between hard drinks and beer, and various kinds of wine, but at a winery, they just have one label. Is that a requirement? That they just sell their own label at their winery?
Have not regulated to that level. Most of the tasting rooms that I know do do that. I believe that they're, and I don't know for sure, but we would not preclude, if someone wanted to have a joint tasting room, like in a commercial area or something, we would not preclude several wineries from going together and having a joint tasting room. But I think the onsite consumption was designed for someone who wanted to, you know, show up, maybe have a glass of wine, stand outside, look at the vineyard, drink a glass of wine, and leave. I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't see the bar thing happening.
Okay.
Okay?
Let me see, I had one more question, but it just escaped me. It just escaped me, so I'll have to let it come back.
Oh, you have one more?
Yeah, but it escaped.
That happens to me all the time. Does, does anyone else have any questions?
Comment, I guess, as much as a question regarding the access?
Yes.
I guess I have a problem, and I've had a problem with the, the permission on private roads. You have a private road, you have an easement. It's a legal document that's binding between property owners, and now we're interjecting more rights into that easement than it may or may not contain. Like the possibility of a property owner having to get permission again for what they already have a legal right to do. And.
Is that rhetorical?
Well, I just, I, I.
I mean, I, I understand your point.
I guess as a statement, and, and I wonder if we have a fix, or a legal opinion.
You know, it's, this, this, this issue has gone round and round. You are right, to some extent. Any other type of use that's on a private road, if you're in a farm zone, and you're not a winery, but you're a mandarin grower, or cattle rancher, or any other type of farm use, you do not need additional permissions to do that type of farming activity. I think the reason that there's a level of concern with wineries, at least what I can garner from having gone through this process for a long time, is that because wineries have tasting rooms, they generally invite the public on, on a regular basis, whereas other farm uses don't do it on quite the same regular basis, that they will be allowed to have, if this ordinance is adopted, fifty people or fewer, anytime that they choose, if they can meet the requirements. I think the thought process was, you know, maybe that's something that, and we're not requiring a discretionary permit, where we could address issues with a private road. Maybe the way we address it is put an additional regulation that you go to your neighbors and you get approval to do that, and, and negotiate with them to some extent, to alleviate any concerns that they have. Whether that's right or wrong, that's not for me to decide. I just think that was the thought process and, and how we got here.
This, this ordinance wouldn't supersede any contractual agreed-upon easement, would it? If I, if I had a, if my easement said that my access was for residential use only, does this ordinance supersede that?
Let me, let me answer that. No, it would not. But part of the reason that, and there was extensive discussion during the event center ordinance as well, part of the, the rationale for adding, you know, the requirements of consent of the property owners was to remove the county from the middle of an easement dispute, as to what the nature of that easement was. And to have them work that out, and bring it to us, to say, yes, we have the right to use this for an event center, for a winery.
Commissioner Moss, I have one thing for you, and I wanted to, and you may have forgotten, but you asked me to research what wine-related merchandise was. Yes, do you recall that? I've not been able to find a definition. I will continue to look. I've not been able to find one in the law. I'll, I'll continue to look. I don't have, so, I wanted to beat you to the punch. I don't have an answer on that. Yeah, no problem. Mr. Johnson.
Okay, I, I remembered, yeah. Let me see, we go to the chart, and.
The chart in the proposed ordinance?
Yeah.
Okay.
And if you have a small winery, you're required to get a condition use permit if you're in the farm zone. If you have a large winery, you only have to have a minor use permit?
I'm looking. No. And I should clarify that. C is not a conditional use permit. Conditional use permit would be CUP. C is zoning clearance.
Oh, clearance.
Clearance.
Okay.
MUP is minor use permit. ARP is administrative review permit. CUP is conditional use permit. Thank you. I, I, oh, yes, I did, actually.
Thank you. I should have known that. I should have known that already.
Well, if you go to the end of the chart, I was, there's actually a E.
Yeah, okay. You gotta read the whole thing.
Yeah, helps. Any other questions?
George, are you done with your presentation, or are you asking for questions? You're done.
I'm done.
What, what's, when after public comment today, what's, what's the plan, what's the planning department asking for today?
Well, the planning department is, will obviously take any comments that you have into consideration. What we are going to do now is proceed forward with the process of preparing an environmental impact report. We're gonna need to prepare a scope and that sort of thing. It will take a while, and then we will, we will go back. We will come back to you for a recommendation with the environmental impact report and the ordinance. The thing that, if anyone has any comments that they'd like to make about the ordinance as proposed, which is different than the ordinance that was at the fifth workshop, now's the time for us to, to hear those concerns, because at this point, when we go forward with the environmental impact report, it will be based on the ordinance contained in your staff report.
The staff report has amended the version five?
The one that I gave you that's separate, that's not the one that's in the environmental document or in the staff report.
It's in the big thing, isn't it? Yeah. Okay, I've got it. I just wanted to make sure I had the right one.
In this packet, the one that's attached to this, that's the ordinance. And that is, it is, there was changes from the one that you sent me to the MAC with after the last workshop. Specifically with those things I went over with, access standards, events, noise, those things.
Any thoughts on when you will be back, summer, fall?
No. I don't know. I don't, you know, we're, we're going into an environmental document. I'd like to tell you we'd be back in anywhere from six to nine months. By the time we do the scope of work, by the time we let it for contract, by the time we pick a consultant, by the time we prepare it, by the time we circulate it, by the time we respond to comments. Depending on the comments, that's always a wild card. I'd like to tell you that we'd be back here anywhere from six to nine months. That would be, I would be extremely happy if we made it back in that timeframe.
And that's two hearings?
What?
Draft and final, right?
I'm sorry?
That'll be two, two hearings, draft and final?
Yes.
And we've also received quite a few comments already in written form that were attached to the ordinances, that package that you just linked it up, so. So, but anybody is, obviously is, is welcome to provide in written form, or later on, now when we open up to the public.
Yeah, do you have a thought on the timeframe, EJ? Nine months?
No, I mean, I think that's, that's fairly accurate. Like you said, we're gonna be coming back to the planning commission with a draft EIR to accept public comments, and then, you know, once we get through that process, then we act later on for, you know, an action item.
In the meantime, the wineries operate under what they've been operating under?
Under the existing ordinance, yes.
Except now that we have a more robust oversight on the potential for issues, right?
And it's getting better and better. There's been a few breaks in some things, but it's getting better and better. Code enforcement continues to become more and more proficient. I think that you will see, as we go into the future, more that code enforcement will become even more robust than it is now. Yes.
I have one more question.
Yes.
Just, just found it again.
Yes.
Another one again.
Yes.
Okay, when we first did the old ordinance, there was a big concern about the wineries that are already operating, how the ordinance might, changes might affect their operations. And so, at least, I think the way I understand it is when this ordinance comes into play, then the, and there's some discussion in the package about this, but it's not necessarily grandfathering it, but it'd be just like most ordinances, where the existing operations, if they come in for a change or an expansion, then they'd have to go through the process, but otherwise, they get operated as they are now. Within the, within the, well, within or something.
Anyone who is operating within the law right now, legally operating, can continue to operate at that level until they come back in for some, some permit or discretionary permit, where they would be subject to the new ordinance. I think that most wineries, there's, this won't be much of an issue with regard to this ordinance, because I think most wineries have more restrictive regulations. Well, I think as the ordinance is proposed today, so what you'd probably see is that the ordinance is moving and using the abilities that are given to them in this ordinance, like the six events and that sort of thing. They would be allowed to do that.
Okay.
If, if, if that was granted as a matter of right.
Okay. Thank you.
Further comments from, from questions, we'll open it up to the public. Thank you, George. And if you would come up to the podium and state your name for the record, and also if you, maybe it's already sent us a, a written comment, that would be helpful, because we can review it later on too. So, you're first up.
Always.
Always.
Lori Lewis, Wising Gold Hill Road. I'm, I'm very angry, because I've been in this process a long time, we're starting over. The county presents this as a pie-in-the-sky wonderful thing, but I have factual stuff, file complaints. So, my concern is, A, the county is judging how much alcohol is consumed off of the ABC requirements versus CHP's requirements on driving under the influence. On that note, in my area, in a month's time, we've had eighteen DUI arrests.
What, can you repeat again? What area are you?
Wising Gold Hill. I'm the Lincoln MAC area.
Okay.
Mr. Weigant's district.
Okay, thank you.
To me, that's a high concentration ag-zoned area. Eighteen DUIs and two fatalities. I, if I sat on a board, would be more concerned about alcohol driving under the influence than what ABC recommends for pouring. And I live next to a winery, and people do come, and they do stay all day, and they camp out on the lawn, and they drink wine all day. That's a fact. The other fact, code enforcement. They know me very well. A good example is, one of the wineries had amplified music. I called on the weekends. The agent came out. Yes, loud music. We'll send them a letter. They send them a letter, music quiets down for two weeks, music starts again. I call code enforcement. I'm told that they cannot make contact at the winery. It is a letter enforcement only, and they don't have to comply. So, when the winery was contacted, they told code enforcement it was a private birthday party. It wasn't an event. So, I don't have a whole lot of confidence in code enforcement. I just don't see our representative here on the county's part. I see the Vintners driving this, and I don't see any resolution for me. I'm getting more drunk driving in my neighborhood. I have amplified music that's not enforced, even though I'm filing complaints. Then when I call and my complaints, I get an excuse that it's not being enforced. So when George stands up here and says code enforcement is the answer, it hasn't been the answer for me. So I think the county is providing us with this pie-in-the-sky type of thing that isn't very attractive to me. And it's gonna be a liability for the county. If somebody gets killed from drunk driving with an unlimited pour, you know the county's gonna be addressed in that deep pocket. So, gentlemen, I'm tired. I'm tired of fighting. I'm tired of telling you what I'm experiencing in my neighborhood. I got an event center that is allowed to hold outdoor events. He's yet to build his community center. He is the only event center allowed in the county to have outdoor events and amplified music. Why is that? Filed complaints about outside of his multi, his MUP, multi-use permit. He doesn't have to build that. There is no timeframe. We're on a four-year plan, gentlemen. So I'm just really disappointed. I just don't feel like I'm getting fair representation. You tell me I can do these things, I do them. I don't see any resolution. Thank you, gentlemen.
Anyone else like to comment? Ms. Jasper. We saw you, we have, we have your letter in there, so it was very good.
Thank you. I'll try not to repeat anything that's in there.
No, no, but that's good, though. I just.
But thank you for reading it.
Twelve pages or something.
Sorry. This is important. Marilyn Jasper, Sierra Club and Public Interest Coalition. Before I, the county allows ag operations to have roadside stands. That's a given. And you can sell your produce, sell your products, blah, blah, blah. Wineries were allowed to have tasting rooms as the functional equivalent. And I don't recall a whole lot of controversy over wine tasting rooms. You know, come during the day, taste, sell, and so on. It was the functional equivalent of a roadside stand. And I, I think most people were happy with that. It's when it has now stretched, or morphed, or whatever you wanna call it, into events, and that's where we're having the problem, because the neighbors, the community folks who bought their land thinking this is residential ag or farm, did not expect, or I'll say desire, commercial events happening. Now, not all the wineries are doing commercial events, so we can get sidetracked with that. But there's gonna be this tension between these perceptions of what can happen. I, I hope, whatever comes out at the, at the end with a new ordinance, a zoning text amendment, is, does not have a lot of, trust me, trust me, oh, don't worry, they're never gonna do that. That is not how law should be based. And I consider the zoning text amendment to be the law that we will all follow. But it can't be based on, I hate, I, that, the word is loophole language. And one way to, I hope the county will somehow accommodate all of us, the Vintners and residents, to let us help plug loophole language. We see where a lot of the escape routes are to get by, some of this private, no-public advertising. Holy cow. If you've got a thousand people on your Facebook, that's not public advertising. I mean, there's so many ways to get around the language that we continually hear. So I, I would ask that there be, it doesn't have to be public, although public's better, meetings to talk about these loopholes that cause heartache down the line. So that would involve meeting with the stakeholders. Another thing that, I, I really appreciate the fact that we are gonna have an EIR that will truly, hopefully, look into all the impacts and mitigate appropriately. But another thing that we have to keep in mind, we've got winery tastings and allowable six events per year, whatever. We're also gonna have breweries. They're on the increase. We're gonna have cideries. I think we have a couple already. And distilleries are trying to get permits for tastings. So, and then, there, there will be other, there may be juice, mandarin juice tasting, who knows? My point is, there's going to be some cumulative impacts to neighbors, to residents. We're not concerned about the commercial zones, or the industrial, and things like SIP Auburn. That is, that is the model of what should happen, that if you wanna sell it, have it in a place where it's not gonna impact people in their homes. So maybe the EIR can be broad enough to bring in those other quote-unquote tasting activities, so that we won't have to go through this again for each, you know, a cideri ordinance, a brewery ordinance, and all that. The event, the impacts that have been mentioned today, I'm not gonna go over all those, they still exist. And to address your, I'm on a private road with nine people, and it was for egress and. ingress of the owners. If, if we had thought that it was going to be a commercial operation of any kind, the language would have been different. I hear, I see what you're saying, and, but it's, the, the road repair, we all share, that in itself is an ordeal. So, all those things that we've discussed before are still on the table, and I hope we can come up with something that works for everybody.
Okay, thank you, Marilyn.
Just, just as an example, do you have a homeowners association?
No.
That guides the road, it's just individuals that agree, or you have some kind of agreement to, uh?
Well, I believe there's a state law that governs it also, that you can make everybody on your private road pay, but if they don't, you have to go through a lien process and all of that. But we happened, in our, what do you call, title, there is a, a statement that we will all contribute proportionately to our road, and it's a half a mile road, so it's not cheap, to the maintenance of it.
Okay, and so I would presume in your neighborhood that you would, you would have over half that would say no?
Oh, to a winery?
Yeah, a commercial.
I would say, most would say no, except possibly the three or four who.
And so then, if somebody wanted a commercial winery, I don't know if you're, where you live, even would be suitable for it, but if somebody wanted a commercial winery on the road, I guess they could offer up a higher proportion of the road maintenance, if that would sway the other people?
Okay, that's a really good point. Um, I believe there's one winery in, whose representative owner's in the room, and he did exactly that, and apparently satisfied the other users of that private road. So, to answer your question, yes, that would be an option that possibly all the other parcel owners would vote to, okay, let it go ahead.
Right. And so, so at any rate there, I guess the point is that to come up with a flat rule here is kind of hard, but because it's really an issue that resides in the landowners that are along that road, and, you know, it's not really a county issue, it's a local issue that the people on that road really should have control over. And so I think that's what the language is attempting to do, is to give the, you know, the landowners or the participants in that road a, a chance to weigh in on whether or not they're going to accept this or not.
And that's, I, that's so understandable, but then there's that little edge. I mean, I have, all of us on, well, no, not all of us, about five of us on that road have lived there for over forty-five years. And so, a new person comes in who doesn't have the same sensitivity, not that, I, I agree with you, but my, the, I don't think it's realistic to think that the eight others who bought there, who live there, for the ambiance, for the rural, now have to put up with a commercial operation that, that does impact their lives, their animals, their kids riding their, you know, the private road. It changes the nature of it, I think. It could, I, I, obviously, I don't.
Well, yeah, I, I hear that. You know, there's also a, a right-to-farm ordinance. If you're in the farm zone, then, you know, the farming that you do is, that you've done is a commercial activity, and, you know, if you, you're going to use that road for the commercial activity, you know, a lot, a lot of people have UPS trucks and other type of businesses along the road. And so there's all kinds of situations out there that it's very difficult for the county to come up with an exact prescription that allows, uh, that, you know, I mean, either allows or prevents wineries from opening up on private roads, but I think the landowners in that area, case are the ones that have the ability to do it, not necessarily the county. The county can assure that the winery owner has done his homework, and prove that he's got an easement, and also prove that he's got at least over half of the people on that road in agreement that it's okay. And so that's kind of what, that's what I'm reading right here.
Well, we, we might have to agree to disagree on that, because I think if one person says, this is going to impact me severely, noise, traffic, exposure to risks with people driving on my, on my, in front of my house or through my property, I, I think that has to be considered, that, that is equally as important as someone setting up a commercial operation on, in the rural residential ag and farm zones. It's just my, my opinion.
Yeah, thank you.
Marilyn, before you leave, I was just going to mention that one of the things when we're looking at policy or particular projects, one of the measurements I look for anyway, is how is that MAC in that particular area responding to whatever's being proposed? Because to me, they're, they're closer out there in their particular community, they knew the uniquenesses of their community, and hopefully are able to tap into the community more for getting some feedback on what's going on. And what I'm hearing from George is generally, as the winery association has gone out and made their presentations at the MAC, they've been supported for the most part in what they're proposing and what we're kind of seeing today. So, I guess what I'm saying is, those MACs are a pretty important spot for, for you folks to be making your arguments. And I'm not saying that I, I oppose what your positions are, I'm just saying that I, I want to get that kind of feedback from the community as well as expressing those kind of concerns.
And, and you're, the words that you use, for the most part, I somewhat, I, I, I trust George's tabulation, but I don't believe, uh, my interpretation of what some of the MACs said and how they voted, what, is slightly different, and I'd have to go back and look at all my records, so I'm going to defer to his decision, but I don't think it was that, oh, boy, let's go for the new stuff at all.
So, you were at most of those MAC meetings?
I was at just about every one of them as well.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience like to address the commission at this time? Yes, ma'am.
Oops. Uh-oh. I have a harsh voice.
That's a good start. Woke us up.
I, I'm Tina Wilkins, I own Vina Castellano Winery, one of the larger wineries out off of Bell Road, been on that property for almost fifty years, have had the winery for sixteen years. Like Marilyn, I attended all but one of the MACs, and I think that George's assessment, I've read through his assessment, I think it's accurate. We felt very supported through the back process, I'd say only at one or two did I feel that people were saying that the ag zoning, the ag depart, or the ag commission's requirements should be more restrictive. I'd really like you guys to look at what the ag department or the ag commission is recommending, because what this comes down to is whether.
Did you say?
The ag commission.
She says you'd be more restrictive or less restrictive?
No, no, I'm saying that there, that the MACs were supporting by and large the ag commission's recommendations. That's how George went back and changed the draft of the winery ordinance. It's still more restrictive than what we were looking for as wineries. If this ordinance gets passed as it's written, it will be still the most restrictive winery ordinance in the state. What it really comes down to is, do you want to support this resurgence in commercial farming or not? I do understand, and I do sympathize, and I have lived on my property since I was four years old, I understand that there's families out there and that there's life out there, but it is a farm zone for the most part. It's different with ag residential. With ag residential, the residents should have the priority, but in the farm, the farmers, you need to give us what we need to succeed, or the farm zone will become residential. And you can look all around, look at your Bickford ranches, because those of us who grew up on these large parcels of property, we have to be able to afford them, or what we will do is, we will parcel them off and sell them. So, the wineries, along with the Mandarin farmers, have really, are really bringing ag back in a meaningful way, and we're all right, ready, fighting and competing with regions with one hand tied behind our back. The way that we're operating right now is basically what this ordinance will give us, and we're still going to have to fight to compete. I've been to every wine region in California, we're by far the most restrictive, we're growing the slowest, but yet we're still growing. I'm sixteen years in business, I make about thirty thousand dollars a year, I employ five part-time employees, one full-time employee in seasonal help. This is not, if I didn't have somebody else supporting me, my husband, then I wouldn't be able to afford this. We want to get to that next level, we want our commercial farm zone, commercial farm zone. The farm zone is commercial, that we allow people to live in it is beautiful, but when you come and you, you move into the farm zone, you're not moving to the country. You're not, you know, it's rural, yes, and it's a privilege for you to be able to live there as a resident and not farm. Didn't used to be that way. So, I'm just begging you, please don't put us back. Sixteen years I've been operating at not a profit. Read about all the different kinds of farming, the potential that the wineries and the Mandrins are bringing to our region to keep the farm zone farm and not have it pieced off any further into residential is huge, please don't discount that. Thank you.
Next person? Thank you, sir.
Good morning, my name is Don Dupont, I'm the owner of Rock Hill Winery. I think you have nearly an impossible job.
Thank you for acknowledging that.
This has been going on for a couple of years now.
Sure.
And I'm representing my winery, and not necessarily the opinion of all the wineries, or for that matter, the people that are against this, but I've got an ordinance, some suggestions and notes if I can approach and pass that out, just hand that to you, so you can follow along with the logic. Thank you.
Give one to Kathy if you have, if you have an extra one there, you can give it to Kathy for the record there. That way. Thank you. These will be entered into the record, too, that way, you know, it'll be part of the written comments. You've got everything all on one page, that's good.
Yeah, it's about just a short.
It's an outline.
Okay. I, I really do think it's an impossible project, and one of the reasons for it is that, I'm not sure there's, there's one wine ordinance that's going to satisfy all conditions. If you look at that map, it's pretty diverse, there's wineries that are located in city, Papi, Chiati, and Secret Ravine. So, this is actually, um, Loomis, out here is Rockland, I'm on the border, I'm right off Sierra College. You know the developments happening off the Sierra College at Target, Walmart, Bass Pro, Uwe Theaters, huge, huge development. And to lump me in to the same group of people that have a place, for example, like Charlie Green, who's no longer in business, you know, Quonset Hut, no parking, no EADA, no facility to speak of, and to have us follow the same ordinance, doesn't make sense. We're going to have to look at this and look at it on an individual basis, and my proposal would be that everybody obtain an, an ARP. I think I'm the only one with one, at this point, but at least it would give the planning department a chance to evaluate each facility in terms of some of these conditions. Number one, parking, environmental health like septic, the winery location proximity to neighbors, road conditions and accessibility, facility size, and fire safety issues like wide enough roads to approach, parking area to turn around emergency vehicles, building compliance, fire safety for the building, excuse me, I jumped out of order, fire safety compliance within the building, whether it requires, pole stations, egress lighting, fire alarms, sprinklers, whatever the requirement is, are for the particular building, ADA compliance, and then you run into an issue, well, what happens, like the lady was talking that just left, if there's no compliance? Well, you set up a policy, so this is sort of a policy overview, where if there's a complaint, a warning goes out, first complaint. Second complaint, you come to the planning commission or to code enforcement, and you sit down and discuss what the issue is. Third time, you lose your ARP, you lose the ability with some sort of stipulation, might be, hey, you're out of business for six months, or you can only operate these hours, or you have no music, or whatever the deal is. I think the important point is, all of us in this room don't necessarily agree, but there's one thing we have to agree on, property rights. We have property rights for the people that want a quiet, peaceful neighborhood, we have property rights for the people that have a vineyard and a winery. So, how do you make those property rights work when we're on diverse sides of this problem? And that's why this has been going on a couple of years now. It's not a, it's impossible for you to come up with one size that fits all. You're pretty much going to have to evaluate each facility and say, well, you know what, you've got twenty miles of windy road, we don't really want people drinking and entering a private road and disturbing the neighbors. Maybe that won't work, maybe they're going to be restricted. On the other hand, my facility's on a major highway, three tenths of a mile, with parking for eighty cars, fire parking and everything. Actually, we had, interesting, I'll make this real brief, during harvest this year, we have our grapes, and the deer love it. Well, if you've ever gone up the hill from Sierra College towards Lincoln, it gets quite steep, I own that property all the way to the top of the hill. A guy avoided a deer, drove off the road, and drove right down the cliff, flipped the car, an SUV Mercedes. The point is that there's, there's traffic on that road, okay, and it's important that we're aware of that kind of condition, and this, in this case, he wasn't even drinking. So, fire trucks came in, they used my facility, they had six fire trucks, ladders, helicopters, all kinds of stuff, you've got to at least have, if you're going to have a facility like this, you've got to have the infrastructure. And if you don't, you can't have one regulation that fits the requirements for everybody. I think you have to evaluate it on an individual basis, and what does that do? That costs money. So, there should be a fee associated, this is not a popular statement, there should be a fee associated with an ARP. I, I don't know if it's a thousand dollars or five hundred or what it costs, but it costs staff time and money to go out and, and evaluate, you know? Bring engineering out, environmental health, and planning, and building, whoever's there, and come out and say, okay, here's what we found, here's what you need to do, or if you can't afford to do it, here's what we're going to limit you to. And if, and if six events is, is going to handle the situation, great. In my particular case, I'm actually almost a public service. We have recently had the CHP there for parties, Sacramento Sheriff's Department, Placer County Sheriff's, Intel, Oracle, Verizon, Verizon was there yesterday for team building, eighty-five people there. I'm totally in compliant, non-compliant. I've got eighty-five people there, not a bottle of alcohol was opened, but they used my facility for team building, drinking coffee and donuts and sandwiches, and they used the facility, and there's a need for it. The only one in our whole region is the Blue Goose. So, how do you fill that market niche, at the same time, like Tina said, make enough money to be able to afford your property taxes, and keep the property active and useful without upsetting the neighbors? I think it matters, based on the proximity to neighbors and what kind of impact you perform or you have. So, I, I think it's a, it's a great place to start, because where we're going so far, and I think it's been two years, right, George? Since the, since the amended request was submitted?
About two years.
About two years. We haven't gone anywhere, and there's a reason for it, you have an impossible job. You can't regulate everybody the same, in this particular case. It's based on property, on, and location. So, if you don't have any questions, I'll step down and let the next person out.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you.
And I think you really hit hard on those last four items. And I think you really hit hard on those last four items, the whole compliance issue. I think that's where a lot of people that have an issue with noise and traffic and whatever is a, is a code enforcement. And you've laid out kind of a scenario there that should be followed. So I thank you for that. Anyone else in the audience this time?
Morning.
Still morning.
Still is.
Another half an hour.
My name's Mike Giles. I'm a, live in Newcastle and I live across from winery.
Hey, oh, hey. Sorry, I needed to use that on one of my colleagues here.
This might, will not be in a chronological order, but I wanna share with you the other side of the coin. It'll be a little disjointed, but I hope you'll hear my words. We heard that three out of twenty wineries had complaints filed against them. Well, I happen to know that Pescatori, Mount Vernon, Lone Buffalo, Fawn Ridge, Wise Villa, Dona Daws Cielo and Rock Hill have all had complaints filed against them. So as you go through this process, what's... I'll, I'll give you a lot of conflicting information. I want you to think, ultimately, you're going to have to think, what happens when a winery is successful? What happens when you're Rock Hill and you have Intel and you have CHP and you have all these people there because you're so popular and you have eighty-five people there till ten o'clock at night? Everyone is gonna start their car and eighty-five people having a conversation at your property line? I mean, if you live in the foothills and you know how noise travels, George's anticipation is that sixty decibels isn't going to be a problem. I believe it is going to be a problem. And I think it has been a problem. I think that's been demonstrated. So ultimately here, be very careful of what genie you let, let out of the bottle. If you go with this newly proposed winery ordinance, we heard that the vintners are saying, we have already compromised enough. Isn't that what we heard? We don't wanna compromise anymore. Well, I would say, let's not compromise at all. Let's keep the existing ordinance we have. The one we had went through a four-year process to be adopted. So why are we back here? Let's not ask the vintners to do anything different. Let's leave the ordinance how it is. You were told that Placer County has the most restrictive winery ordinance in the state. Well, if I'm not mistaken, Nevada County limits their public events to four per year. And if this ordinance is approved, we used to have two-day, three-day events. Now they want those to be six individual events. And George, you'll have to help me here, but there's temporary outdoor events and there's promotional events. When you add them all up, you're, I think you're talking in the range of fourteen to sixteen events. That's a lot of events, not including the ones that are, what, private events? Not including the ones that have less than, what is it gonna be, twenty or fifty people? How many events are we actually talking about now? I'll bet you no one here can tell you. I'll bet you no one here can tell you. But based on the success I'm hearing of Rock Hill, there's the potential to be a boatload. And we talk about the MACs not having issues, only a couple MACs having issues with the winery ordinance. Yeah, I think that that's true. And they're the MACs that are located where these wineries are. If you're over in Granite Bay, no, you really, and you're a MAC, a group, you really don't have a problem because you don't have wineries to deal with. If you're in Forest Hill, do you have a problem with this ordinance? No, I really don't because you don't have wineries to deal with. If you're in Sheridan, do you have to deal with it a little bit more constructively? Yeah, you do because your neighbors are actually getting exposed to the future and what it holds. So that only makes sense that some of the MACs would have issues. They're the ones who are experiencing the problems. Private roads. It has been an issue. It remains an issue. It will continue to be an issue. What the county is doing here, we're told, oh, the county, this isn't really for the county to get involved with. That's among citizens. Well, essentially what that does in layman's terms is we are not going to take a strong enough stand here to support the residents. We're, we're out. You guys settle it in the courts. Is that leadership? And, and consider this, all these things are, you are constantly being told, it's a farm. Blah, 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 blah. It's a farm. Blah, blah, it's a farm. Well, if you're serving wine by the bottle, by the glass, and we've already heard people sit out there and they, they enjoy themselves and they drink and, and they're not just coming in buying and leaving. They're drinking, they're enjoying themselves. Well, and we've heard about, well, they have a limited selection of what they can drink. They're not serving hard alcohol. Well, George, if I'm not mistaken, and maybe I am, but I think wineries can also serve brandy. Number of these wineries will have a Chardonnay and a Merlot and a Cabernet. So exactly how much variety do you have to have before it is a bar? Because I'll tell you one thing, it's not a farm. And so when you say, well, no, the road access should be the same as a cattle rancher. The cattle ranchers aren't having issues here. Well, the cattle ranchers don't have steak houses. If they had restaurants serving steaks, it would be a huge issue. But that's what the wineries are doing. They have what they're calling tasting rooms because we're not gonna call it a bar, even though the only difference is they don't have vodka there. We can go on like this for hours because we see things...
Just hope not.
Yeah, we see things from different lenses. A resident sees it, a neighbor of a winery sees it through one set of lenses. I know because I am one. A winery owner sees it with different interests. Doesn't make them wrong. Doesn't make them wrong. I understand both sides. But to take these five acre parcels with people who moved into the country and said, you move next to a farm, you should be receptive to fifty people in unlimited numbers and two hundred people at other times and, but don't worry, the limited parking will take care of it. Well, these facilities are on five acres. I've seen the parking. It's railroad ties or chalk on gravel. That's a parking spot. Give me five acres and a chalk line and I can make a whole lot of parking. I guarantee you. And if I'm successful at it like Rock Hill, I'm going to. And I'm going to exploit this ordinance, not illegally, but I'm going to take every advantage I can. And if I can fit two hundred people out there, I'm going to. That's human nature. So as you go through this, consider everything, think about what common sense would dictate. Should these events go till ten PM? Or should maybe they actually have to wrap up at seven thirty? When you're located in a farm zone, which is predominantly residential, five acres plus?
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you.
And Don is absolutely correct. You have a tough job. I wish you, do the best you can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience like to make comment this time?
Hi, I'm Stuart Perry. I'm with Fawn Ridge Winery here in Auburn. And I guess you have a tough job because it's tough to sort through all the facts that might be involved here, I guess. I don't know. If I, if I can digress, there was an earlier question about bars versus tasting rooms and availability of variety of alcohol. And I recall that part of the equation involved what is being served. We're all licensed under Wine Grower O2 licensing and ABC rules of California laws. So we can't serve another winery's product. We have to serve our own. And that's what all of this is really all about, our trying to individually survive. And I guess with the wine industry, it's linked to farming. You can look at Mondavi or Gallo or any of the old timers and they'll tell you they started out farming and Napa Valley was a farm zone. In fact, Napa Valley was very successful because their particular community embraced the idea. And over time, it did evolve to where it is today. And now they are struggling with growth issues. In fact, they're still struggling with issues around their ordinances and the like. So when I sit back and I hear the, the testimony, and I'm not here to criticize those testifying, but I'd like to clarify that a lot of what's being said is not really accurate. So, and, and should we really look to government to govern our, our personal property rights and the like? There were two particular properties for sale on my road. They sold within a week. In fact, if you look back, the listings might still be advertised. I don't know. Both of those properties were advertised because of their proximity to Fawn Ridge Winery. Now, who wants to buy a property on a road that's got a winery? Well, those two new owners stopped by and they were very thankful that they made that choice. So when you look at the, the wine industry as members of the community, we all have given back tremendously. Talk to your local nonprofits, the hospitals, the schools, youth programs. We're here as members of the community to be viable businesses and give back to the community and not cause problems. The stats with regard to complaints, my winery was singled out and having received a complaint, that was probably in our first two years of operation. I, I don't have the dates in mind. When the county came out, they realized that the complaint didn't really measure up to what really truly was going on. In fact, I was alleged to not even have a business license that I needed to present to the investigator. So complaints don't constitute violation. Complaints constitute somebody having a problem that the county's called on to resolve. And that's why we've hired an additional staff person primarily to deal with the wine industry. We'll have to see if the complaint level goes up. I, I can guess that it probably will, but how many of those complaints are, are going to truly be resolvable versus those that may not be versus those that are even founded or unfounded? So we can, we can gather statistics all we want, but when it really comes down to it, you know, we're all here to work with our neighbors. And if that were not true, then I think there'd be a house full of neighbors, would there not be? So I'm always kind of impressed with how many people show versus not show and what constitutes a countywide problem. So I don't think an ARP is necessary to address all of this. In fact, the majority of what I heard had to do with building requirements and the building department's rules and regulations. So I, I won't belabor it all, but I just kinda wanted to... And by the way, I'm in Auburn and the Auburn MAC fully supported the recommendations of the wineries. In fact, if you look at the map, there's quite a few wineries in the Auburn district. So how is it that the MACs...
What's the name of your winery again?
Fawn Ridge Winery. I'm on Fawn Ridge Road.
Oh, oh, the one way up the top.
North Auburn, right. We're the furthest north. I'm also a member of the Sierra Vintners Association from Nevada County. Nevada County did evaluate a change in their ordinance at one time that would have been more restrictive. They did not follow through with that. I don't know if George can, 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 you know, verify that with another neighboring county. But as a member of that particular county, they don't, they don't have the restrictions in events. So that was a proposal. It wasn't accepted. It wasn't followed through with. So that gets thrown into the mix. I have to answer either the question. I could, I could go on and on with the rules and regulations of the wine industry and alcohol, but you don't wanna go there because I'm in the midst right now of doing my annual report to the feds and it's not fun when you have to track every grape and every drop of wine and where it goes. So we're very regulated as an industry. We're just asking that at the local level, we have an ability to survive as small business persons. So that's all we ask.
Yeah, I have a question. I, I think in the existing ordinance and maybe in the proposed ordinance, there's some discussion about where the grapes come from, I guess where the wine is processed. And at any rate, as I understand it, in the old ordinance, maybe in the new ordinance too, they kinda identify a wine region ten or something like that.
Yeah, that's the district that we're located in.
But at any rate, there's also opportunities. And I know if you find a good buy on good quality grapes in the Lodi area or even over at Napa County, sometimes the vintners from here will buy grapes from those areas and bring them over and I guess process them here. But I, I guess what I'm asking for is on this particular rule and the document, what are your thoughts on that?
The, the vintners early on met with Josh Hunsinger and, and some of the other members of the staff that were working on the ordinance. And, and Josh in particular advocated to, and, and keep in mind, we're doubling the requirement for acreage now. So we felt like that was a move in the right direction. And we had to embrace overall what this county's, you know, demographics are like. So there's many smaller parcels that are truly eligible and, and can meet the requirements of a winery, but they may not have the space to require twenty acres of grapes or whatever. El Dorado years ago set higher, higher requirements because they had a great many more acres of land available for farming. So Placer's getting kinda chopped up. I'm sure you guys all know the board recently canceled the Williamson Act. So historically, we've always moved towards development. And I think as, as Tina Wilkins said, we're, we're all really concerned that that will in fact continue. I mean, I have five acres. So if I come back to the planning commission and ask for permission to subdivide to one acre parcels, will you approve me? I don't know. Then we'll probably get into a fight over how small a parcel should happen in farm zone. So back and forth we go. But the two acre requirement doubles it. The state of California requires that producer, a wine grape grower, not exceed fifty percent of their particular product being produced at that winery. So you're not gonna have millions of gallons of wine and cases of wine being brought in for retail sales out of these tasting rooms. That's not, that's not legally permissible by the state of California. So I don't know if that helps. Yeah, if, if Lodi has a better price on tonnage grapes than a, than a particular winery, might purchase that product. I can tell you right now, if we don't support the wine industry, there won't be any more vineyards planted in Placer County. And that's what I'd like to see overall. There's, there's fewer and fewer acres of farmland that is truly available. But we have kind of a shortage of grapes right now. So a lot of the wineries are really looking outside the, the county to make their purchases if necessary.
So if the proposed ordinance does put a limit in there, an assumed limit, that the grapes have to come from Area 10, then you would oppose that?
No, I wouldn't oppose that at all. No, I'm sorry, I may...
What about the wineries that... I guess what I'm asking is, it seems like some of the wineries at any rate, I don't know if Lodi's in Area 10 or not, but if Area 10 has good quality grapes and you find the price that, that helps you to supplement your wine making activities, at least it appears that the ordinance would limit your ability to do that. Is that correct?
I'm forgetting that part of the clause. Commissioner Johnson, I can't recall that part of the, of the ordinance right now. My understanding is...
As you're saying, it's okay. I mean, you're just gonna buy grapes in, in Area 10.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You're not gonna buy them in Napa or Lodi if you...
No, I, I adhere to the Sierra Foothills AVA, which is the viticultural area that we're located in. So I, I grow Barbera and Syrah as two particular varietals. And then I may turn to... There are, there frankly, aren't a lot of commercial grapes available in our county right now. So I primarily turn to El Dorado County nearby for greater purchases.
Some of your counterparts though may go outside.
They do.
They would be technically breaking the rules in the document?
I think, I think if I recall, the language is more about the, the predominance, the majority of your production come from, from, from District 10.
So it's not an absolute, it's...
I don't think it's absolute, but the majority.
Okay. Well, maybe we can ask and ask that question when we get through the public part of it. Appreciate your answer.
And I, out of all of the guys that I know, I, I, I don't know of too many that go outside of District 10, to be honest with you, but...
I wonder if some of the white grape people, I mean, the white wine people might go outside, but...
I don't know. I, I get my Chardonnay and Viognier from El Dorado.
Do you?
Higher altitude, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? Thank you for your... More questions for this gentleman? Anyone else in the audience? Okay, I didn't know if you were heading out the door with the other gentleman or making a, what, a right-hand turn to come here? Thank you for coming up.
I'm Kevin Stevens. I own Cask Wines and I've served as president of the Placer County Vintners Association last year and also for this coming year. I'm gonna be very brief. All I wanna say... All I want to say really is that I've been intimately involved with this whole thing for two years. I've helped with the winery ordinance committee, that's part of the PCVA, to be working directly with George. We've met with George, we've met with Josh Hunsinger, we've met with our opponents, I guess. All of these issues, ARPs, noise ordinances, events, road access, all of this stuff has been discussed ad nauseam for two years. I went to every MAC meeting. It's just painful how long this process takes, and we've been at it. The ordinance, as it's written now, the draft ordinance, is a product of all of that work. It's not time to sort of rethink. Maybe we tweak, maybe we do this, but this is a result of the MAC process and the ag commission process, and the ordinance, the draft ordinance as it stands, is primarily the ag commission's recommendations. We backed off our initial recommendations, and we're essentially, excuse me, there right now at the ag commission recommendations with a tweak here and there. If you want to talk ordinance, noise ordinance, and DB at a property line, I'll talk to you all day. I used to run sound for a living, that's what I did before I got into this crazy business. You want to talk ARPs, we went over that issue. All I'm asking is, let's not reinvent two years' worth of hard work. I don't have it in my system to redo this whole thing, and I don't think the Planning Commission wants to do that either.
Okay.
Anyway, that's all I have.
Any questions? No, thank you for your presentation.
Thanks, guys.
Being brief was nice. Although, I got to compliment all the other speakers before that, I didn't mean to put anyone down by that. My last little comment, you've all been, I think, on target and real succinct with your comments. Thank you.
I'll be very brief. I agree that we already have-
Your name, the record?
My name is Dean Farquhar. I live right in the middle of the wine trail. I live on Wise Road at Baxter Grade or Ayers Homes. I get my share of music on the weekends. I'm very concerned about this gradual creep of my right to peace and tranquility. I've been there for 40 years, I have a cattle ranch there. I feel like I'm being oppressed by just, I think the county somewhat is pushing against me and not with us collectively. I agree that, as George said, you're having a difficult time even taking care of the ordinance as it currently is. I agree with the last gentleman who said, gee, why are we going to something new again? And lastly, I ask all of you to please consider these changes as if you lived where I do in the middle of all of this, not where you may particularly live now. And, yeah, there are a few of us, and unfortunately, we are the silent minority or majority of people that are out there, live there for years, and are not getting this representation that I think we should have, that our right to pursue tranquility and the lifestyle that we've had there for years in our ranching business. So, thank you very much, and hopefully we'll get this thing resolved. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience like to make a comment on this at this time? Seeing none, I guess I'll turn it back to the post-public comment, turn it back to the commission for discussion or questions of staff or direction to staff?
I have a question for George.
Yes?
One of the people who came up said that when code enforcement has come out and has found a violation related to noise, that it was only done through a letter of informing the violator of what they have done. So, is that true? They don't go and say, hey, you need to knock the music off here, or do they just kind of drive away after they've determined what's going on?
I think at this point, they haven't actually physically, if there's something going on in a winery and they're exceeding, they haven't actually physically gone on site and shut it down. I don't believe that that's taken course. The way the code enforcement process works is that you make a determination that there is or isn't a violation. You send a letter that basically says, you know, you're in violation, please stop. Then there's this whole process you go to that ultimately winds up if they don't come into compliance with either a judicial citation or administrative citation. I think the frustration that was being voiced was that code enforcement makes contacts with the people, says, you exceeded the limits, don't do it again. There's a period of time where they don't create any problems, and then they resume creating problems. I think code enforcement is in the process of figuring out how to deal with that kind of repetitive problem. I think what you'll probably see in the future is, if you do that, that you immediately go to the step right before the notice of violation, that basically, I mean, before the citation, which is a notice of violation, it's like, we were out here, we told you no, you stopped, you started again, you're in violation. Come in and talk to us, or we're going to be out to cite you. I think you'll see things like that starting to take place as code enforcement. You know, this type of enforcement is kind of new, and it needs to be sort of, is still being vetted, about the best way to handle those situations.
Something we've talked about in the past was about having a sign on the property with phone numbers so that neighbors could contact, you know, either the winery or they could contact the county with concerns, issues that may come up. Is that something we've followed through on, or, you know, what's the status of that?
That was for agricultural event centers in the last ordinance. Since that ordinance adoption, we have not had an agricultural event center come through our process, but if an agricultural event center does come through, they'll be required to put up that signage per the ordinance that says, this is an agricultural event center, if there's a problem, contact this number.
Are you saying that wouldn't apply to the wineries to have to put up a sign because they're, you know, certainly event centers as well?
Yeah, we don't have that requirement, we don't have that requirement in the winery ordinance.
Might be a good thing to consider.
Okay.
George, on that same line, when I asked earlier to show the differences between the existing community and event centers, rules and the wineries, could you, you know, pay attention to that so that we can see them side by side, the differences between them?
So, let me, so you wanted to know the difference between a regular event and an unadvertised event, is that correct?
No, I want to know the difference between every kind of ordinance involving any kind of event or community center and the wine ordinance.
What's the difference?
In the agricultural zone?
An AgRes, especially.
An AgRes.
Okay. Yes, we can do that.
Thank you.
Matter of fact, I actually think I have it.
Well, if you can email it to me or something, I'd-
Yeah, yeah, I just haven't, I just haven't brought it.
Yeah, what, like the Gold Hill, what is that, event center, what's the differences that they have to work from versus what a winery would have to do?
Gold Hill Gardens is a little bit different. Gold Hill Gardens came in prior to the adoption of an agricultural event center ordinance.
Well, let's just see the ones that are going to be affected from here on.
Right.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I do, yeah, I want to go back to the question I was asking Stuart, and I guess the reason that I'm wondering about this is I think I read a comment in the public comments that addressed somebody that was buying grapes in Lodi and producing wines in Placer County. And so, you know, I just read the ordinance, and I guess as I read it, it encourages clearly that the grapes come from the winery property itself or District 10, but I don't see anything that necessarily prohibits somebody from buying grapes outside of the area. Is that correct?
Yeah, the section under general encourages people that primarily it's for the processing of wine grapes from District 10. Now, I'm a little embarrassed to tell you this, I don't know what county Lodi is in, do you?
It's probably in-
It's not District 10.
It's not District 10, okay.
District 10 is a good one.
Yeah, but it also goes all the way down to Mariposa, though-
Yeah.
-which is quite far down.
I think it might be in San Joaquin.
Okay. Well, anyways, so, if I understand what Stuart Perry was saying is that even if you buy wine grapes from somewhere else, that only 50% of that can be from a different location than your winery, is that correct?
The wine itself cannot, 50% of the wine produced by that winery is required by the state of California, okay? So, what I was alluding to was, you can't bring in gallons and gallons or cases and cases of wine outside-
Oh, I understand.
...that produce 50% of that product on your license.
Yeah. Yeah, it does.
But you can, but you can bring the grapes in and do it.
Right. So, by and large, there is nothing that would stop, that would stop people from buying grapes from outside of District 10. This ordinance is encouraging, encourages people to purchase within District 10, but here's what I found out, and this is a good question, because I had the exact same thought. It's like, you just open a winery, you don't, you don't produce any grapes, you grow two acres, and you buy tons of grapes from other places. And really, the reason there's provision for wineries to purchase products outside of maybe District 10 or inside of District 10 outside of Placer County is because it came up in a conversation, I said, you know, can we put limits on this? And they said, what happens if there's a bad year in the foothills and there are no grapes for anyone? It's very limited, there's a frost or something that goes through, and the crop is horrible, and we have to go somewhere else, we have to go offsite to get wine. And they said, here's the thing, if we can't go by product, the way a winery works, if you don't produce any wine for a year, your business essentially takes a nosedive. So, these provisions are also there to help a Ventner in the event that they have to go outside because of lack of availability of grapes inside the county, or their crop fails or something like that.
Okay.
If you could buy 100% of your grapes outside, but the Ventners Association says you need, to be a member, you need to have 10% of your production being in Placer County.
Anyway, we close public, thank you for the comment, though, that's clarification.
Yeah, we're having a conversation.
Any other questions for George or among ourselves? Go ahead, Larry.
Just a comment. My wife's family happens to own a vineyard and a grape-producing, wine-producing operation at Sutter Creek, just down south of here. And I had an opportunity recently to go there and visit it and see it, it's a fairly new facility, and they, every row of grapes had a label on it, and I was amused by it because it had, you know, what kind of grape it was grown, and who was, who had bought those grapes before they ever grew. I mean, they were still in the fall. So, this is a huge business that's almost impossible to track because as I went down, I probably saw 50 different brands of wine on these various rows of grapes. And so, when they're harvested, those grapes go directly from the growing to the winery, and I don't know how you'd ever police that situation. It seems almost an impossibility to determine any percentage of grapes that you could or couldn't buy, or where you could get them and what you couldn't. It'd be a nightmare to try to figure that out. I just, and I, when I saw that, I thought, holy cow, this is an industry into its own. I mean, they seem to get along with one another, they buy from one another, they know what the, where the good grapes are and the bad grapes and the kind they want. We'd, it'd be an endless job, I think, for us to get too far into that business. I think, I think if we, I got to say, I'd almost rather use the ordinance we have and try to deal with it on a case-by-case basis, because we're going to end up spending a fortune doing an EIR for this thing, and I don't think we're going to be any better off then than we are right now, and that kind of seems like a waste of money. And I guess, I think we want to try to make everybody happy, but I don't think it's going to be possible. I think we got to do what's practical and reasonable for everyone involved, and I guess, I don't think I'd go with the EIR thing myself.
I hear your comment very clearly, and, you know, I agree with it, but at least the problem I'm hearing is that the existing ordinance really puts the Ventners in a position where in order to stay in business, they have to violate the ordinance. And so, how do you come up with a middle ground here that allows them to stay-
Well, I think it's the opposite. I think, Richard, we haven't reached it.
Well, let me finish it first. Yes, you know, stay in the context of the ordinance legally and also stay in business. I guess that's the issue that we're really trying to deal with.
I have a question for George. If we keep, or the rest of the panel, if we keep the new ordinance that we're proposing now without any changes, do we have to have an EIR? If we don't make a change, if we don't upgrade or whatever?
The ordinance that we have-
Proposed right now, before any changes that came in today?
I think you would still have, it's hard to put it in the context of that because we didn't circulate that as part of the environmental document. I think that, for instance, if you have, like, we have Boutique Wineries, which was in New Landjes, which is in the old ordinance as well, those sorts of things bring into question the adequacy. There's some questions about air pollution, some things like that.
So, the ordinance as it stands now, there actually isn't one, Joe, is there? The one that we have proposed now would still require an EIR, most likely?
My best information for you is the one that we had at the fifth workshop, if we had used that, which is slightly different than the one that's in here, this one is a little bit more liberal with regard to events and access requirements, I think a lot of the same comments would have come, and I think there would have been comments that would have risen to the extent that we needed to go beyond.
The EIR either way?
Yeah, I believe so.
If the fifth workshop and the new one that we've got today incorporates a few more changes from this, but you're saying either one, if we want to change anything from the existing ordinance, would need an EIR, according to your best information?
I would think that there are some issues in the previous ordinance as well that if we had circulated as part of the negative declaration, that would have risen to the level-
Oh, okay.
-with regard to having to prepare an EIR. Do you think I'm off base on that?
Yeah, I think so.
The existing regulation, though, wouldn't require an EIR.
No.
Just let it ride, right?
But, I'm sorry?
The existing ordinance-
You mean, the one that we have in effect in our zoning ordinance today?
Right, it doesn't require an EIR.
No, it's, the ordinance that's in effect today has been in effect since 2006, and we wouldn't have to do anything, other than, you know, enforce it.
And that's what you're suggesting, Larry, is just leave it in place, right?
And go on a case-by-case basis.
And basically go as was suggested to do a-
And so, let me circle it around again, then, if we do that, then on a case-by-case basis, how do we address the Ventners' economic concerns?
Why do we have to?
Well, I don't know if, why do we have to?
I'm asking you, I mean-
I don't, I'm not saying we have to, I'm saying, well, how do we address the economic concerns of Ventners with the existing, with the existing process?
Well, there must be, didn't the board direct us from 2006 to do something to help the Ventners or something like that?
And we also were given direction this time around to prepare an ordinance. I think-
So, that's off the table is what you're saying?
Yeah, the governing body with its supervisors have asked us to do something.
They've asked us to prepare-
And you just mentioned that, so the grand jury also addressed this, too.
Yeah, I think at this point, and anyone feel free to correct me, I think at this point, you're in the phase of, you can make recommendations to me about what we should or should not do, and then as staff, we will take those recommendations and decide whether we move forward or make changes or do whatever.
But we still would need an EIR. There's no turning back, in other words, is what you're saying?
I don't think at this point, based on what's been happening, and at the very bare minimum, even if you scale back from this, that you escape an EIR. I don't think so. I mean, I can think of ways that you could, but I'm not sure we can at this point.
So, what's the, maybe this is not a good question, but what's the driver driving us to an EIR here? What are the issues?
The standard.
What?
The standard, the legal standard to challenge a negative declaration is very, very low. It's the fair argument standard. It's, the courts have said that if there is substantial evidence in the record to support a fair argument of the potential of an environmental impact, you must do an EIR. Based on the comments that were received, it was staff's conclusion, looking at all, that that standard could potentially be met. it was staff's conclusion and looking at all that that standard could potentially be met. Because this is the county's ordinance, that would then place the county at the risk of being sued if we moved forward without stepping back and reevaluating as to the level of environmental review that would be necessary to support this ordinance.
What you're saying is there's been too much public comment over the last two years to ignore.
I'm sorry?
I said, there's been too much public comment and concern to, over the last two years to basically ignore. I mean,
Correct.
in, in layman's term, not legal terms.
Yes, yes.
I'm an engineer, not an attorney. Okay, thank you for that clarification. Any other comments among, among the commissioners here or?
Well, I just wanted to indicate that I think it was a wise move on the part of the Ag Commission to increase the acreage, even though it's minor. Two acres of grapes brings it more in line with an agricultural operation, particularly on a
Smaller parcel.
On a four, 4.6 acre parcel. So hopefully that that stands and also commend the Ag Commission for the work that they did in moderating this proposal. It's, you know, we'll see how it goes with the EIR, but I think that brought us closer than we've been before.
So today, we, we don't have to take any action. Is that correct? Staff has kind, kind of got the ball and going with it?
Correct. So, so we will proceed and go down the path of the-
Okay, I want to thank the people for commenting, commenting on this. It's a work, still a work in progress, although some of us wanted it not to be, but for various reasons, but I think it, what did hear something again, over the last two or three years that we've been discussing is kind of de facto commercialization in, in an agricultural zone and, and the code enforcement issue. So it sounds like from George that the code enforcement is being ramped up on their procedures as well as manpower and so hopefully that'll help in the long run.
It's, 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 yes, it's getting better. It's not perfect yet, but it's getting better. We're going in the right direction and it will continue to get better.
Okay. There are no further comments. I'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you again for coming.